Thank you for joining us today while we have a quick study session. We are having a study session about the new development happening on Warren and Telegraph. I believe we have, this was called here today by a resident who has wanted to voice his concerns. As you know, we here as the legislative body in these council chambers, we open up everything to everybody. You're more than welcome to speak your mind and your heart. Mr. Hakim reached out to me and said, "I would like to speak before the council." And so, Mr. Hakim, we have a city council meeting that starts at 6:00. I also want you guys to keep in mind, for those at home and those on Zoom, my Zoom is not up yet, but if Madam Clerk lets me in because I was late and I just put it in, I'm going to launch the meeting. But if you can see here, he has given us a booklet with the proposal, and it seems like he's going to read us and walk us through this. It might take about two hours, but I'm sure Mr. Hakim can get it done a lot faster. Mr. Hakim, the floor is yours. Is there anybody in particular that you want to have here? Because I could tell you, we have our Corporation Council here, we have our clerk, and six of our city council members. Councilman Wanso did reach out to me. His wife is just facing a little bit of complications, so he will be out for today.
Council Chair?
Is, what's his name here? Is our IT director here?
He was.
It's a...
Update?
I had to update.
Yeah, it was pretty fast, though. I just did.
What's the, what's the meeting ID?
You don't need a meeting ID.
There you do.
What is it?
825.
825?
6822.
Hold on, hold on. Sorry, no, you don't. He's right. Let's just turn...
Just exit.
825.
6822, 6773. They won't allow me to log in.
Either way, please go ahead and continue.
Council Chair, if I, if I may, before we start, we have been sued by Chillbox. I just want to make sure this, which is a gas station up the street from, I think, a car wash that this gentleman owns. I just want to make sure we don't discuss, if that's, if that involves that individual. I don't know who owns these two properties, but I want to make, let, make sure that we don't discuss any one that is involved in the litigation with, with the City of Dearborn Heights. So, as long as we keep the parameters and you're aware, because other people may be added as defendants to this lawsuit, including, because that, that lawsuit involves Planning Commission decision on, and an appeal to the zoning board. I just want to make sure, and involves maybe some property they own, I just want to make sure it doesn't get into that area.
So, Mr., thank you, Roger.
Or address that plaintiff, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Roger. So, what the Corporation Council is saying, refrain from using anybody's name.
Well, I just want to put it on the record, Roger. I did send you an email and said, "Any lawsuits that concern the property at 6539 Telegraph, we should be given notice so we could third-party in." Have you given us notice if it involves the property?
That's not my decision. That's MMRMA. As you know, there are different defenses, including adding necessary parties to lawsuit, but I'm not going to discuss that.
I'm not saying, Ed, I can, I can third-party in if it involves my property.
You can do that, but that doesn't involve...
But I don't have any notice of anything.
You, that's up to MMRMA to decide a strategy and which way they're going to handle it.
I'm just putting on the record right now.
Appreciate it.
I sent you an email specifically telling you, "Any lawsuits that concern Tony's car wash, you need to give me notice so I can third-party in."
No, because you send me an email doesn't mean I have to act on your email that way. I acted on your email...
You had notice.
Sorry, I'm talking. I acted on your email by forwarding it to the necessary lawyers, and the lawyers will speak to you if that's necessary.
Okay, let's just, let's just go ahead and then, Hakim, just refrain from using anybody's name. Roger feels as, he's an attorney, he's a grown man, he's an adult, he feels he doesn't want to give you any information after you requested it.
Well, I mean, Council President, I get blindsided with this information that nobody's, I don't know if even the city council...
I have no idea. I, well, none of us here, I mean, I don't know, I can't speak on anybody else, but he's not told us anything.
You know, I looked at the agenda item, I didn't see this on the agenda. I looked with the mayor. We were trying to find exactly what you would be, if you were here talking about this. I didn't see it. But as I stated, when there's a lawyer involved, we don't make the decisions. The attorneys make the decision for us because the insurance carrier covers us. So, I would not communicate with you, as you may be a necessary party, or you may be added. That depends on the lawyers who are representing it, but we don't, I don't communicate with you on that.
If it has anything to do with the appeal and the, and the approval of that car wash, you guys can easily enter into a consent agreement, which then affects me. So, absolutely, I should put a notice.
No, and no, it does not come easily without the approval of our lawyers, number one.
I disagree with you. I'm not going to argue.
Number two, it's the zoning board, sir.
Guys, point of order. This is a study session about what development is happening at Warren Telegraph. I'm not here to hear either, either Mr. Fakori or from Roger to sit here going back and forth. Mr. Fakori, please, you have just a little under 25 minutes.
Thank you, Council President, city council members. I appreciate the opportunity. My job is to bring...
And please speak into the mic a little bit.
My job is to bring to your awareness of, of concerns that I have as a business owner in the City of Dearborn Heights. So, I, I put together something, a chain of facts here with exhibits supporting the concerns that I have, that I want to go through and memorialize for the city council on the record. There is building that's going on at the corner of Warren and Telegraph. I don't have specific, this is information that I've gathered. I believe it's 100% factual. That's something that the city council can double-check and see. But my understanding is 2405 Warren and 7015 Mayburn is the property that's being developed right now. This is a property that is currently owned by IZ Properties LLC, who is Ahmad Bousa, the owner of IB Electric. My understanding that there has been no change in that ownership up to last week when I pulled title work. Mr. Bousa, my understanding, from the City of Dearborn Record, Dearborn Heights Records, submitted a proposal to planning three years ago to vacate the alley and to construct the gas station there. If you look at Exhibit 1...
What page is Exhibit 1 on?
It's the fourth page.
Okay.
This is an email back from the city attorney, where I'm asking the city attorney on the record, "How long is an approval good for?" And he responds that the good, an approval by a board is good for one year from the date of the approval of the minutes. It's been three years since there's been any approval on that property, yet he was issued a permit. If you turn to the next page, Exhibit 2. Exhibit 2 is an email between, exchanged between me and the Building and Safety Director, Rick Wetland, asking him if permits have been issued, and he said, "Yes, the permit was issued in 2023, pending clarification from the state." So, obviously, there's construction going on, so he was, he was given a green light by the building's safety to build.
Building and Engineering.
Okay. Many may know that, and I have a, on Exhibit 3, which is the next page, Tony's Car Wash submitted for approval for fueling pumps in the parking lot and was approved by going through the process of applying for the, the planning board, and the minutes were approved about 60 days ago. This came, obviously, with heavy opposition from the owners of other properties, and I want to, I'll touch base a little bit later on the concern of one of the board members. And I'm going to try to just flush everything out before I was just moving forward and not worrying about things that had happened. But now, I think I need to detail things, what happened and, and why, how they could happen. On June 4th, 2024, Board Member, Council Board Member, the council had approved for a moratorium on car washes and gas stations. That's the permitting and issuing of any permits. So, somehow, some way, a permit was released in 2024 after the moratorium was in place. So, this was a question that was posed to the Building Department with no response, which made me further investigate. I also want to bring to the council's attention that Abu Dibedoun and Ali Bazi somehow, some way, applied with the Zoning Board of Appeals on my application, asking for the application to be overturned. They are no, they were not property owners and they were not the applicants, but yet the city accepted the application and allowed the process to move forward. Fortunately, the zoning board attorney made it very clear that they had no standings in the appeal. But yet, I had to go through that, all that process, and of course, my attorney had to submit a FOIA to try to get a notice of what was going on, because we had no idea. We actually heard it from a resident who came to us at the car wash and told my son. The application for the zoning board is the Exhibit 5. I'd like you to turn to Exhibit 5, if you may. You can. How in God's name, to somebody who is not a property owner, who wasn't the appellant...
What page is Exhibit 5 on? I'm sorry.
So, I'm sorry, Council President, I didn't number these pages.
Okay.
So, as if he had standings, as if he's a property owner, as if he was the applicant for the board, the city accepted these zoning board appeals. I don't know how, but they were done. I asked with no response.
I'm not an expert in the charter, but I don't know. Maybe the charter allowed, and I, again, I don't know. I'm just trying to kind of like, maybe get the understanding of the city and the administration. Maybe the charter allows for an opposing...
It doesn't.
It doesn't?
It doesn't.
Madam Clerk, would you know that?
What's your...
Do you know if the charter allows for any random individual or member of the community to go and oppose and go before the ZBA?
The ZB, the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Planning Commission have their own rules, their own lawyers. That does not involve us here. They're separate. And, and since 2007, when we changed it away and took the decision away from the council, and I guess Pletko was the, and Miyake had put that together back in 2007. Therefore, it should not involve us. That's totally the lawyers and the decision of the Planning Commission, and then it goes to the zoning board after that.
I thought Councilman, Councilman Muscat, excuse me, Roger, also brought it back so that any special land use, or special land use comes before the city council, yes? Councilman Muscat put that in, and that unanimously passed, and it was only for special land use.
All I know is that the 2007 rules, and I did a brief on that, I included Gary's brief, Mark Roberts' brief, I put that all with the area about who has the final decision on it. I submitted it twice to the council, and you should have, I'll try and pull it up again and get it to you, Council Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm, yeah, go ahead.
If I recall correctly, Gary Miyake's advice that it didn't come to fruition...
I got it. Point of order. Nothing from the audience. Turn on your microphone, please, Councilman.
Thank you. It didn't come to, it didn't go all the way through.
I remember talking about...
I know, I know, we agreed we did not want to see every decision before the council, but I could have sworn that special land use was voted on, and only special land use. But I could be mistaken, so I'll just go ahead and continue. And again, I'm just, I'm just thinking my thoughts out loud here, Mr. Fakori.
I, I think the issue here is, if it was brought by a non-owner, if it was brought by somebody else, then it's, you know, not valid.
It should have stopped right at the clerk's off, or at the counter, when it was applied for. Application...
It does not go before the clerk, just for disclosure.
I'm sorry, not the clerk. Yes, my, my mistake. I'm sorry.
I will repeat it. I don't, I know disrespect to, to Mr. Fakori. I apologize. This is now into the lawsuit issue that we have a separate representation by MMRMA, what happened at the Planning Commission zoning board. So, I'm just letting you know I would...
I won't, I, I won't, I won't talk about the zoning board.
Thank you, Roger.
All right.
Go ahead.
So, Exhibit 6 shows that I sent your director a copy of the warranty deed showing the ownership of the property with, with no response. Exhibit 7 shows that I sent the director a copy of the Declaration of Restricted Covenant.
The which director are you speaking about?
Mr. Wetland.
The who?
Building.
Building?
Building, yes. Showing that there's a Declaration of Restricted Covenant that's recorded on the property, saying that nothing can be built on that property, at least without state approval.
Okay.
All right, so... If you go to Exhibit 9...
Is that past Exhibit 1?
Because I wasn't getting any response back on some of the emails, I had then submitted a FOIA to the FOIA Department.
Where it says here, "Dear Mayor, I hope all is well. As you know, I have a concern over the development of other businesses."
Yes. So, I reached out to the mayor because I, I received a response from the FOIA Department, and the response was that there was no planning, no zoning, no permits on, on the site in the past 12 months.
Wait, wait, can you start back?
So, if you go back to Exhibit A...
Exhibit A?
8.
8. Well, we didn't, we saw Exhibit 9, so we skipped.
Just before, the page before. That's the handprint.
Page before. So, the, the FOIA says, "Any and all documents regarding the development of 2405 Warren and 7018 Mayburn, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, 48127. A copy of the approved site plan, copy of the building permit, copy of the approval from Planning Board Meeting within the past 12 months." And if you see above my name, the documents you requested, the FOIA, do not exist.
To the best of my knowledge, information, we have no public records exist on October 23rd, 2024. This may set forth in the request detailed above MCL 1523. In this event, there is no steadfast response. Okay.
So, what I'm asking for is an investigation on why this place is being built and why there's not a stop work order until they go through the proper procedure. And if they go through the proper procedure, because of the moratorium, they can't build. And I want to also bring to the council's attention the last exhibit.
Is it Exhibit 10?
No, let's see, 13. So, 13 is a car wash that's being built on Michigan Avenue. This is, this is a property owned by the same property owner. This, again, was being developed without permits. My understanding that there was something sent to the city to bring to their attention that they're building it without permits, and then they, they put a stop work order on the, on the construction of the car wash, but they allowed him to go through the process and go to planning, basically a slap on the hand, and ish get a, a approval from planning to build the car wash. How in God's name did that happen when the moratorium specifically says, "No applications can be done"? So, not only one property, Council President, but two properties, same property owner, that is getting away with murder right under everybody's eyes. This has got to stop. I, I'm not here to fight a fight. It's not my fight. You guys are the body that regulate everything that goes on. My job is to bring to your attention, I've tried to memorialize it in this, this document here, everything that you need, but answers, somebody has to answer. And the only thing I would suggest is that there is a open council meeting and that these department heads are brought here to answer these questions.
I, I can tell you right now, you know, keep in mind that the council is not brought forward anytime somebody's building or anything is happening. It just, ultimately, they go through the, you know, the channels, and then the legislative body is just not there. We'll get it if it needs some type of approval for most of the time, but, you know, to know if every single business is pulling their permits and if they're being operated the right way, you know, I could tell you, I, I have no idea that that was happening until you brought this forward to us. What I can also tell you is, and I'm not here to defend Mr. Wetland, if Mr. Wetland, if somebody's working on something and he has no information that work is being done, you know, he's not driving around to seeing what construction is being done, and, you know, and I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm not saying that, you know, he's ignoring things, but he could be out doing other things. Now, I, now that you have brought this to his attention, I am going to have this conversation with him. I'm sure the mayor will probably have it to Roger or any of these council members here, or if Mr. Wetland would like to speak, or if he wants to hold off on his comments, he's also more than likely. But if, if Rick did want to speak, he can raise his hand, because at this point, I don't know as to why, you know, the same business owner having two development has not pulled any permits. And that's unacceptable. That is 100% unacceptable.
Council President, he's under construction, under moratoriums.
Yeah.
I mean, how do these things happen? And let me just tell you personally, I've never seen somebody more respectful and knowledgeable than your building director. He's been phenomenal. My job is just to give him information. It goes in his inbox. He chooses what he wants to do with it. It's up to him. My job is not to get nasty with him. When he can't respond for whatever reason, and maybe his hands are tied, then I go and I do my own FOIA and then try to bring that to the mayor's attention. And then I was, tried to set up that meeting and that was canceled, so now I'm bringing it to you.
Yeah. And I want you to know, these chambers are open to everybody equally, so, I mean, you're, you'd never be denied to these chambers. And I'm sorry that you're going through this, and...
Well, I mean, Council President, one of the things that you have to think about, if, if this is what's going on in Dearborn, it's a deterrent for people to come invest here, because money goes where money's welcome. If they're afraid that there isn't parity, and I have to go through, spend $10,000 on print, $6,000 for loyalty fees, application fees, and, and somebody can just walk in and say, "Here, I want this because I'm somebody." That's not right.
Yeah, unacceptable.
Council Chair?
Yep, go ahead. Any comments from any council members?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I got a question.
Yep, go ahead, Councilwoman.
The property on Warren and Telegraph, was that, that was a gas station before, right?
Correct.
Was that condemned?
Yes.
Then you're not supposed to be able to build another gas station there unless you go through a special process of replacing the dirt.
That's, that's correct. Now, they, they could have done it. I, I really don't know.
I've never seen it, because I've been watching it. I drive that corner almost daily.
So, that's why they, they, Laura recorded the restricted covenant on there, so when somebody comes to try to build anything, especially a gas station, they have to bring it up to a certain standard, and whether it's residential standards, I, I have no idea.
Yeah, because I'm very familiar with this. My cousin was involved in gas stations, and he would talk about how they got condemned. And the gas station, unfortunately, across the street would be thrown apart because they knew they had to go out, their competition had to go out of business because their property was condemned. And, you know, he explained to me the process of trying to bring it back to where you could use it again and put a gas station there, but most of the time you can't.
And correct me if I'm mistaken, Madam Clerk, and I don't mind to cut you off, Councilwoman, correct me if I'm mistaken, there was a gentleman that once came on when we were on Zoom, and it was when I first got on council. He lived in Northville. He was buying the play, he was buying it, and he was supposed to like, he came before the council for something, but it was like three years ago, maybe four. Eh, I don't know. I don't forget things, but I, I do recall having this conversation, and I think it was when it was Councilwoman Malowski, Maxo was the councilwoman at the time, Council Chairwoman at the time. But I do recall us having something come before us. They needed an approval from the council, and, and it passed, and people were like, "Hakia", like, "We were gonna, they were gonna develop this", but this was a long time ago. And this was from a gentleman that lived in Northville. Like, I, I remember very briefly, but that was the last time I've heard about this. And then I heard that nobody was, nobody cared for it anymore. So, I don't, I really don't know. We don't know anything. The last time this came before us was four years ago.
Understood. Council President, just in close, I just want to say one thing. You have your packages in front of you. Exhibit 11 is something I don't want to stay on the record, but I want you guys to take a look at it, because it's something that I think is very, very serious.
I mean, I'd like you to state it on the record. If, I mean, you brought it here and we've opened up everything, you might as well state it.
All right. So, as soon as I started poking the bear, all of a sudden, there were some repercussions. So, Eagle, which is a, a, a state agency, was called out to one of my other locations to do an investigation.
On you?
On, on my property. Eagle also said that they were contacted by City of Dearborn Heights on Tony's car wash. Why? I don't know. There's a closure report on there. The city has a copy of it, but they're, they're looking for something for whatever reason, and that, so I don't know what the retribution's about. Then I also had a customer come to me, said that an employee was told by the administration that I was under federal investigation. And if that's the case, if that's what they're telling people, then, and that leaks into the street, and that's why I didn't want to put it on the record, but...
I'm sorry, who said that?
I'll explain a little bit more. This came from a customer that, you know, obviously, it, it will hurt somebody's business, but I just want the city council to know, somebody who's had knowledge of this, if there's an investigation going on, God wouldn't know about it. So, the fact that it's being said, that means somebody told them to say it, and that isn't right. You know, all I'm trying to do is keep everybody's feet to the fire.
And look, I could tell you, Mr. Fakori, that's unacceptable. I'm sorry that that happened to you. But I can tell you firsthand, I just shared at the last city council meeting, I walked into the grocery store and I was just, immediately I was being painted as this very bad person while everybody else was being victimized. We cannot contain or control what others are going to state and say. But I can tell you, you know, I know I'm not a bad person, and I know that you're not a bad person, and, you know, people at the ultimate, they are going to say what they want to say, but it's going to be on individuals to be able to be the bigger and better person to know they're only causing fitna and haram and trying to harm people's, you know, culture and, and their presence. It's just unfair and ugly and spiteful.
Council President, the reality is typically things like this come from the top and trickle down, and that's unacceptable.
I agree with you. I agree with you.
Thank you.
Yes. I, you know what, Councilwoman Malowski, Maxo was not all done, so I want you to finish.
Well, yeah, because I was going to say, I do recall that too. That's how I knew about the process, because I talked to my cousin after that meeting. I'm trying to recall the exact details, but I do remember, once it's condemned, it cannot be a gas station again. The, the land is condemned, and I've never seen them do anything to it, because I, it's been on my radar since somebody mentioned it when I was on council, and I watched that corner often.
Yeah. Anything else, Councilwoman?
No.
Councilman Constance?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fakori, for coming. I was involved, or represented somebody who was involved with litigation regarding that station and some others years ago with Carl Knight. Originally, there was a, was a BP where the Tim Hortons is, and there was a, was it a Clark?
Oh, you're going way back.
Citco.
Citco.
And, oh my God, it was...
Guys, no side comments, please.
One of the parties involved in, but yeah, it was that, the, when Ron Ammon was Economic Development Director, we got the Tim Hortons, and, and that gas station was torn down. I don't know if the tanks are still there or what the situation is, but...
No, it's got, it's got a closure report.
I see Carol Knight's signature here on some of these...
Yes, believe it or not, he's still alive, by the way.
Oh, he's, I thought he passed away or something.
No, he's in, he's in the hospital.
But anyway, that, that, there's been a lot of problems with that property, and we need to be careful on what we do before anybody develops it.
Well, look, it's, it's a great corner, and if, if it allows the development of a gas station, then so be it. That's something that everybody has to live with. But if it doesn't, then it shouldn't. But if it doesn't, then it shouldn't.
There's a big station right across Telegraph that was owned by Ray Havelina. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm going to have Councilman Sab and then Councilman Ammon. And we're going to go ahead and wrap this up. Mr. Fakory, you still have some questions from some of the council members.
Mr. Fakory, regarding this, this site with the station on the corner, you said that when you requested from the city, permits, plans, checks, whatever, nothing was provided in the FOIA.
Correct.
Do you know what the lot limit to be off of when you build a property? Setbacks in sidewalks on a commercial lot?
Well, I mean, typically, there are setbacks, side yards and rear yard, front yard setbacks. But if zoning board allows you a zero lot line building, then you can do it. I just don't, from what I, from what, I know they're building a zero lot line.
Is there the minutes from their meeting? Because I was upon the Planning Commission and I don't even remember the building being on their side of.
Well, I contacted the, the Planning Board and asked if they, to verify, has any application been submitted the past 12 months? And that location, they said no. So, but whether it was submitted or not, the moratorium is in place, right? So even if they got their approval 13 months ago, they would have to reapply, just like the car wash. So the car wash, applied, was denied, applied, was denied, applied, was denied. They got a permit to build and were able to reapply under the moratorium, which should have never happened, same property owner.
Then my other question is for you. Have you checked with the state of Michigan regarding the restrictions on the deed?
I did. Yeah, I was able to extract that information that I gave to you guys.
And this is the most up to date the state gave you?
That's what I got, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Uh, Councilman Ahmad. Are you done?
I'm all set.
Thank you.
Counsel Chair, Mr. Fakory, regarding Exhibit 11 that you just mentioned, did you receive anything back yet or still?
No, they, they requested a 10-day extension.
10-day extension, okay. Thank you.
Any other members of the council? Seeing none, we're going to end this study session, go into a quick five-minute recess, three-minute recess, and then we'll start our regular city council meeting.